Great, got it.
All right. Good afternoon. The time is 2:45. This is the City of Durango City Council Study Session on January 7th, 2025. Can I get a roll call?
Councilor Woodruff?
Here.
Mayor Buell?
Here.
Mayor Pritam Yasi?
Here.
Councilor Yusuf?
Here.
Councilor Bosmans?
Present.
Excellent. First up, we have the reading of the Land Acknowledgement. All right, first up, we have, oh, we don't, yeah. Okay, first up, we have Organizational Stewardship, Financial Services Monthly Report.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Elliot Fitz, the Budget Manager, and we're going to go through the November 2024 Monthly Financial Services Update. So just as we always start, the sales tax forecast, we were 6% above our forecasted revenue through November, and prior year variance was 5% above last year. So we're pretty happy with the turnout going into the end of the year with sales tax, and we'll continue to monitor it through the end of the year and going forward into '25. General Fund was 1.25% above our seasonally adjusted revenue projections. So again, pretty close to our forecasts, and things are starting to level out kind of from that phase shifts that we had seen in prior months. But again, we're above our forecasted revenue, so that is a great thing. Next, we have the General Fund expenses, which were actually 2% above our forecast, so expenses are rising. But year-to-date, we're 15% below our forecast, so generally a good thing. The expenses being below budget is good financial health. Next, we have the Enterprise Funds Budget to Actuals, Revenue Budget to Actuals. And while they are coming down, this is the time of year, and what we expect seasonally, we expect them to pick back up in December. But they are still 1% above our revenue projection, so we're happy with the turnout. And next, we have the Enterprise Fund Budget Taxuals expenses, which were 5% below our seasonally adjusted projections. And year-over-year, they have increased by 27%. But again, being below our forecast on the expense side is a good thing. We're below budget on the expenses. On the capital budget side, actual revenues were 46% below the adjusted forecasts, where revenues were projected to be 3.025 million, actual revenues were 1.64. Again, this generally has a lot to do with the transfers that we do between operation and capital funds as those capital projects get completed, and we anticipate that the expenses will rise in December. And it is something that we will monitor and make sure matches with the expense side. And speaking of the capital budget expenses, they are 10% above the seasonally adjusted forecast, so we are getting a little bit more capital projects done than we had at least projected seasonally, which is a great thing. You will see a large variance between 2024 and 2023, and that variance can be explained by the purchase of the new City Hall and Police Department building, Community Development as it is right now. And as always, we have those large negative values because of the conversion for GAAP principles. And then just some other financial services update. The budget was adopted for 2025, so thank you very much for all of your support in that and getting that done. Accounting is prepping for year-end close and kicking off the audit, which I know that they are very much looking forward to working on this year. Fleet and Facilities, 18 special requests for facility maintenance, 152 work orders completed, and 115 pieces of inventory issued over the counter in the warehouse. And last, we did have a window capital project in the finance area of this building, and a time of writing this report, it was 80% complete, and it is 100% complete now. With customer service, we improved our daily utility payment process, leading to a noticeable reduction of staff time and handling, intercepted and made it needed repairs and improvements to all 16 advanced metering infrastructure gateways and enhanced repeater stations. This was a pretty major project taken on by our Customer Service Division. So they are doing some preventative maintenance that we're really happy to do before it gets to be in a bad situation, and we also replaced 52 advanced metering infrastructure repeaters operating within the mesh network. With that, that concludes our presentation. Any questions?
Excellent. Thank you, Elliot. Any questions? Any questions online? All right. Next up, we have Marty with our Environmental Sustainability Month Report.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. This will, as you've seen before from the Sustainability Division, sometimes not as much of a monthly operational update as a more holistic view, and so this study session is a year-end and a recap of 2024 and looking ahead to 2025 from sustainability as a whole. So you, this slide has been presented to you before, but just as a refresher, our adopted sustainability plan has these five key sectors for sustainability, and these do align with divisions and departments within the City of Durango. But of course, sustainability is interdisciplinary, interconnected effort, and so these are not hard lines in the sand by any means. Also note that climate impacts equity and those cross, those cross-seeding ideas or concerns are, are part of all of the aspects of the plan. For energy, our 2024 highlights are certainly the completion of our Energy Performance Contract Construction and our solar panels, six, over 600 kilowatts of solar installed across five sites. sites. More regionally, LPEA, you may have seen in the news that they voted to separate from Tri-State, so that could have implications on our energy grid mix, our amount of renewables, hopefully going to increase significantly, but then also pricing structures and things like that, that the city can keep an eye on. Some trends for 2025 to look at, there's a lot of, there's a lot happening around the state of Colorado for energy codes related to both requirements and opportunities to do stretch codes or opt into more energy-efficient codes. The Four Corners Office of Resource Efficiency has been really expanding their work and programs and looking to partner with them. You may have heard the term beneficial electrification, but this is basically looking for opportunities in heating or transportation or other instances where switching to electrical options saves money and has better environmental benefits. And then, of course, the federal election may have impacts on the funding that we see through different federal programs over the next four years. For 2024, a lot happened in transportation, so sustainable transportation, again, is looking at transportation holistically and really not just focusing only on the car and single occupancy vehicle transportation. So we updated our multimodal plan, we have a transition plan for zero emissions transit, record transit ridership levels, we have our very successful and popular e-bike rebate program, and we're expanding EV charging infrastructure. See, key trends for next year are going to be secure and reliable funding for our transit services, seeing as how those are increased in their utilization. We have a number of multimodal connectivity projects, bike and pedestrian connectivity projects on, on the docket, as you know, are expanding on-demand microtransit. Excited to say that we secured another round of grant funding for our e-bike rebates, so we'll see that comparable in 2025 as '24. And EVs continue to be adopted, both fleet but also around the community, and just expanding what our transportation and parking and charging infrastructure looks like as our community shifts towards electric vehicles. Consumption waste, we had a very successful and record-breaking household hazardous waste collection event. The statewide plastic bags and styrofoam ban are now in full swing, and we are seeing some bag fee revenue come to the city through that. Obviously, looking forward, organic waste management, as you know, is, is a top community concern. If you haven't heard about it before, I've, or I have mentioned it before, but if you, if you have forgotten, the Extended Producer Responsibility, also known as EPR, is a huge wave change of, for how recycling is managed across the state of Colorado. It really is going to change the landscape for how we do recycling across the state, and it will have significant impacts, beneficial impacts for Durango. Lithium batteries disposal are becoming an increased issue, and there's some state legislation being proposed to manage those in, in a better way, maybe similar to, you know, how you have to put a deposit down on a, on your car battery, so maybe something like that. But lithium batteries are becoming an increasing issue, causing fires in waste streams, and also, we want to use that lithium again for, to make new batteries, so we shouldn't be wasting it. And then we want to expand, especially with our merger with Visit Durango, looking at improved waste management for events and hospitality sector. We are successful, some key lessons learned from our turf grass replacement program for water. You know, you're aware of the stormwater fee consideration, we have some opportunities for strategic conservation, for continued water conservation around growth and planning, both outdoor and indoor. So continuing to promote programs that support water conservation community-wide. And then, thinking bigger picture, perhaps you've been reading in the news, the Colorado River Management Agreement and the interstate negotiations that are occurring there, pretty huge implement, input, implications for the Colorado River Basin. We'll see if that has any effect on Durango specifically, but it is something that we're keeping our eye on. Last but not least, in natural systems and ecology, we have the Dark Sky Ordinance, which has been a great step forward for both our cultural implications for, for Durango, but also has positive effects on wildlife. Certainly, we have dark sky tourism and people seeking that connection with the environment, so that's been a great step forward. We saw increased wildlife conflict and an uptick in the number of euthanized bears in our community, so looking to see what the, the role City of Durango can play in preventing those interactions and making it so we don't lose as many bears in our community. And then, looking ahead, Dark Sky Continued Certification, to be Dark Sky Certified and the code enforcement and education around that ordinance, forestry inventory plan and update, wild, continued wildfire mitigation preparedness, that will always be a top priority for our community. And as Durango Mesa Park continues to expand, seeing how we can design that in the most sustainable way possible. Any questions?
Thank you. No, go ahead.
So as far as the certification goes, I, I don't believe our certification has been, has gone through the whole process. Actually, Lilly Oswald in our Planning Department has been working on the code side of that, and then Waylon Ryan with Visit Durango has been a big champion of that effort. And so with their merger to the city, Waylon is one of the staff members coming over soon, just in the next couple of weeks. And so he would be able to give more detailed update on our, our certification process, specifically with the Dark Sky International. That's a great question. So basically, the, it's a statewide bill that producers, so that is people that create packaging material, including paper products, cardboard products, aluminum, steel, plastic containers, so basically common recyclable materials. Those producers have to pay a fee into a state program for every item they produce, so, you know, a fraction of a cent for every cereal box they produce. That goes into a fund, and then that fund pays for statewide recycling. And so we will, we don't know the details of that plan yet, but there is a good chance that we would be able to offset a substantial portion or some, if not all, of our recycling fees that we currently charge, we'd actually instead be able to use that, that state pool of funding. Now, of course, those slight increases on cereal box costs do get passed on to the consumer, but it's just a different way for paying for recycling.
Anything else? Anything online for Marty? All right. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Innovative Housing and Economic Development, our Community Development Monthly Report.
Hey. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Buell and Council. Daniel Murray with Community Development. The highlight I'm going to give you is some projects under construction, and then we have projects that are going to be under construction that are recently approved. So the first one being the Affinity Apartments, it's out at Three Springs, it's at the roundabout as you drive into the hospital. It's 162 units, and it's at the foundation stage, so that's happening, it's nine different buildings, so it's a lot of different activity on the site. Smaller buildings of three stories broken up on the entire parcel, and they're also staging on the parcel across the street adjacent to the police substation, so it seems like more activity. The next project is up on Gigline Gulch. It's 12 townhomes that went through some pretty extensive utility work over the summer, and they too are in the foundation stage, so that's underway. The next big project is one that I have a photo of on a subsequent slide, I'll describe it more here. It's the Mesa Verde Senior Living Facility. It's over 100 units. They're estimated to employ roughly 70 to 80 employees once operational, and they're looking to be open by the end of the year. And the photo itself does speak to the size and scale of that facility, so I'll revisit that. The other project is one that we're all very proud of, it's Residences at Durango, it's on Highway 160. This is all affordable housing or workforce housing, 120 units, and it is expected Phase One to be open as soon as the end of this month. So it is very far along, and then Phase Two, middle of the year. I have a photograph that shows that site as well. Going back now to the Three Springs area, more specifically South Fork, as it's known off Wilson Gulch Drive, there's an automotive repair shop that has broken ground, so you see dirtwork being done. Similar to this photo, this photo is actually of Starbucks, about a quarter mile away, and also in the South Fork area. So now we're looking at in the roundabout with Maverick and McDonald's, this is a proposed Starbucks. So construction's begun there, and this is a, I think, a reflection that it takes time for development to follow when roads and infrastructure are put in place. Wilson Gulch Road is predates certainly myself, this is a 10-year-old road, and it is good to be aware that almost all the lots in South Fork have sold. So development is coming, albeit maybe at a slower pace, but from the master developer that went in, subdivided, created the roads, water sewer, all the parcels but a few have now changed hands, and they are getting ready for development. Bringing it back into town, REI is well under construction, it's starting to look more like an REI. If you've been by in Boto at the intersection of Turner Drive, they're also hoping to open up mid-year. They are phasing that one such that it's one contractor is the exterior, and then they have a whole nother contractor that comes in and does the interior. And I expect that to go rather quickly, because these are business models that are quite dialed in with what they're, what it is they're bringing. We're all quite familiar with Durango Fire Station 2, Old River City Hall, just a few blocks away. That is making rapid progress, it is great to see that happening, and will be operational this year. The other big project is one that Downtown Durango Hotel, over, it's 202 units, and they're also hoping to open up midsummer of this year. And then the last one is up on North Main, it's known as Boundary Hotel, it's the old days in. The address is 3030, so it's been under construction for quite a while. That project is making progress, they've grown their scope of remodel. It started out with some light room remodeling, and I think they're on to their third phase, so they've opted to just keep going with their remodel, which is why it's taking so long. This is an example of the senior living facility, so on the bottom screen, you see it, it's a H layout, so if you're on the hospital side, it's the same general configuration of the building. It is a rather large facility, for those of you that have seen it underway. These folks are making a tremendous amount of progress, I'm sure they're excited to be dried in, we're very close to it with winter upon us, so they'll keep plugging away. And this is a similar operation that is in Farmington. And I remember being at the Community Development Commission meeting here, that he is a developer from out of state, was working in Farmington, came to Durango and realized he needed to bring this facility to Durango, and I think, we think it's going to be a great addition, given its proximity to the hospital. This is the Residence, Residences at Durango, so we see Phase One is the one- and two-story elements in the foreground, and then Phase Two is the new construction, and that's three-story elements in the background. So definitely going to be a great addition, and in a good location. This last image, I'll actually go back, as I mentioned, actually it's forward. As I mentioned, development tends to follow infrastructure. So you see, and this is what's coming to you all, or at least coming to your boards and commissions, is there's a high concentration of development activity, not only out at South Fork, along 160 and downtown, and that's largely what you would expect. That is where there's land available and it's most accessible. So what's under review right now in our office is what's known as Lightner Creek Commons, this is the old Animus High School spot, along 160. This is 29 workforce housing units, also a partnership between the city and the developer for workforce housing. This is Twin Buttes Affordable Housing Contribution, was the dedication of this land. So that's how that is coming to fruition. It's part of Twin Buttes' Affordable Housing Contribution. Also, on the northern part of your screen, you see the star for County Road 250, 251. This is the improvements that are about halfway under construction on West 32nd and East 32nd. This will be finished this summer, so I imagine you've all experienced the improved road conditions that are going to look a lot like Florida. It's going to have a large multimodal bike path, it's going to have a landscaping, medians at times, and some of the things that we don't appreciate when these road improvements are made are what's underground. They've made significant stormwater improvements, and that was pretty much absent in this location, so big infrastructure improvements are occurring, not just above ground but below ground. And I believe, over the next year, we will see more development coming in off of 32nd and in the intersection of what's known as East Animus Drive, will be readdressed as East Animus Drive. The pawn shop is poised and ready for redevelopment, the nursery is considering what their options are, there's a vacant lay-down yard at the intersection. All of those folks have come in and asked, what can we do with our property now that this road's being improved? The next, I think, big change in the corridor is what was the Tarpley Building or RV Sales has been bought by Durango Motor Company, and that is tracking for our Community Development Commission in January. It'll come to you for annexation in February, and that will be an expansion of Durango Motor Company's business operations. Projects that are recently approved that are also getting underway, we have the West Side Triangle, Triangle Mobile Home Park, and that was annexed. That's another partnership between the city and the developers, the Elevation Community Land Trust, to bring up to 107 workforce housing units. After that is Crater Apartments, going back to South Fork, 500 units for apartments, and that will be built in five phases, and that was previously approved. They came back in with a new developer, they reconfigured their design, and that's been approved, and we believe they'll be moving forward as well. Going downtown, Garden Schwartz is doing an upstairs remodel, that's to make way for a future tenant, which would be the, I believe it's the District Attorney's Office, so that was a big draw of some professional offices to downtown. There will be an exterior component to that remodel, so that's going to kick off this summer. They are adding an elevator and an ADA ramp. So that's a great example of how, in a historic downtown, buildings can modernize and meet current codes, particularly for their upstairs tenants to be, bring in ADA compliance. Going back out to South Fork, Home Two Suites is a Wilson Gulch project, I mentioned, that would be right next to the Starbucks, and they're going to share access and have a pre-coordinated site plan. On, back to Main Street, 1018, 1020, it's a building next to Carver's, is going through a very extensive interior remodel as we speak. There's four residential units upstairs, the downstairs commercial units will stay, but the facade will get a complete makeover. And we're always encouraged when you see people reinvesting to this scale in our downtown and wanting to keep the mix of uses and the vitality going. When you see, if you recollect what's there, it's a very mid-century kind of conventional building, and what's proposed definitely reflects that this is of a location that warrants reinvestment. And the last one we'll highlight is Farm to Summit, a great local business that was on North Main, they've relocated and actually been able to buy their building, which is on 160, it is next to the dry cleaners. It's been historically rock-solid cabin countertops, and then most recently, it was, I think Sunshine Rides was the taxi service in there, so they were able to buy that building and, and move in for a longer home. Wrapping up, I have some highlights in our building division. Wrapping up, I have some highlights in our building division. As you know, we launched OpenGov in July of last year. So we're six months in. It certainly feels like the new normal for us. I do think it's become quite commonplace in our planning and building community to go online, submit your permit. It is highly utilized in terms of online payments. We knew that was much needed. The amount of foot traffic we get has dropped off completely. Once we deem an application complete, it's sometimes entertaining to see how quickly they're going to pay. Like it's they're eager, once they get notice, that your project can kick off after this step. So that's being well utilized. Some other improvements in two thousand and twenty-five is we're going to continue to bring and do our inspection requests all through OpenGov. It is a higher level of communication. If someone can go into their project, their building permit, request an inspection, they get acknowledgement that it's been scheduled and it'll happen on this date. Currently, that is a bit of a phone call back and forth that is not as predictable nor as timely as what we can accomplish with OpenGov. So we're pushing more and more of our inspection requests to OpenGov. We've also launched as of January first this year, roofing permits. It's always been required by code. It's something that we're going to start operating for building permitting and inspections to increase the quality of roofing. We've been told and many roofers in the community believe that this is a portion of the industry that can can have low quality or just take advantage of a situation. There's no licensing in Colorado like there is in other states. So we think it's important to require permitting to increase code compliance. There's no fee initially. That's not our objective. It's just to bring the quality and code compliance to the work. We are supporting our engineering counterparts in increasing their utilization of OpenGov, so they have their whole series of right-of-way permits, excavation permits. So comm dev and engineering have been in step this entire process in our configuration, in our rollout, and now just increasing utilization. If you recall, we do have and went through a period last year where utilizing a third party for not only inspections but plan review. I'm happy to say that we've completely phased out third-party inspections. We now have that skill set in-house. Plumbing was that last piece of the puzzle for us. So we're doing all inspections with city staff, and that creates more predictability and communication amongst the builder and our inspector. The last piece that we are still utilizing for third-party is plan review. We want to bring that back in-house, and that's with the hiring of a building official. That was part of your two thousand and twenty-five budget. And interviews have been underway, and we're working through that process. And I hope to be able to share that more definitive definitively with you in the near future. The right side of the screen, I'll mention some some numbers. Since we launched OpenGov six months ago, we've received a hundred and seventy-one applications, fifty-two of those in the planning realm have been approved. And even actually, since I've created this slide several weeks ago, we've issued another fifteen over the last two weeks. In our office, it's actually a very productive time of year. So we were able to move a lot of things through the office. So that number's bumped up to sixty-seven. In building permitting, we received a hundred and thirty-six applications and approved a hundred of those. So that means thirty-six permits under review, which would be that next round of projects we can share with you in a month from now if they've been approved and are tracking for construction. That is a summary of what's happening in comm dev and how we're meeting strategic plan goals.
Oh, we've got a lot going on. Thank you for your presentation. Questions?
Yeah, Daniel, um. What sort of feedback have you gotten about the OpenGov platform? Have you feel, do people feel like it's enhancing their experience? Or do they kind of miss that kind of face one-on-one kind of interaction?
Yeah, there's always the opportunity for that FaceTime coming into the office, so that still exists. I think the general feedback has been positive and and where we may not have the counter experience. What OpenGov has built into it is we do all of our communications through OpenGov. So it's like email, but it's just tracking the communication log. So the amount of response people are getting, applications submitted, received, you're ready to make payment, received, onto engineering review, onto fire review. I think they value knowing where their project is at. And they can see that visually, and they get notices every time I upload a document and I get a notice when they upload a document. So I think the general experience is positive because the communication stream is quite high.
That's awesome. I'm glad there's that communication mechanism on both ways to allow better, just people know what's going on with their with their permission. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I thought it was real real concise and a lot of information. So thanks for that. So I'm wondering, bringing the plumbing inspections in-house, are you saving money for the developers? Or the builders, or is it a wash?
I'd say that savings is a wash. This is being done by existing city staff, so an inspector hired, so no added expense for the city. And the fee for a plumbing permit in this case has been the same then and now. So it's more about the continuity of the inspection, someone that they know is going to be the same person they see on their next job. And they can meet those expectations.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything from anyone online?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for your presentation. Next up, we have Housing and Tourism Monthly Report with Mike French.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'd like to start the update, talking about strategic alignment. We've been starting to coalesce housing, economic opportunity and tourism. And one of the first asks I had was for the group to come up with a mission that aligns with the city mission and vision. And this is what they came back with, which I am pretty pleased with. Our mission is to enhance the quality of life of the residents and celebrate a multi-generational community by promoting equitable access to attainable housing, fostering inclusive economic growth and elevating the city as a vibrant destination. So we'll more to come on on this coalition. A housing update, I'll be a little bit repetitive to Daniel, but it's worth repeating the first of all, the Rivergate Lot Four property closed December nineteenth. The next step is for us to publish an RFQ and and seek development partners and see what we can do with that property. The original design was for thirty-one units. We do have a right of first refusal on a subsequent property, so potentially a development partner will think about it holistically, which would bring us close to seventy units there. The Acpo Townhome closed also December nineteenth, and that completes that project. So we're pretty pleased about that. As Daniel stated, the residences at Durango hopefully will open at the end of this month. It might spill into February, early February. That's seventy-two units on the front side. Most of those are our studios and one-bedroom apartments. There is a single two-bedroom apartment. The back will be forty-two units, which will come online hopefully June thirtieth or before June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five. And that will will be a combination of two bedrooms and three-bedroom units in the back. We're currently looking to break ground on Lightner Creek Common Townhomes, which was also discussed. Durango Crossing, the URA approved that district, and they'll enable that project to start relatively soon. We are sunsetting the Leasing for Locals program in due to the fact that we primarily used ARPA monies to launch that program. That will be sunsetted at the end of this year. West Side and Triangle Mobile Home Park, the conceptual development plan has been approved. And last but not least, we're completing the revision for the fair share manual, and we should see that in the month of February, probably early March. Some highlights on tourism. Lots happened here in the last couple of months. As you all know, the the Visit Durango Board requested a merger from the city manager, and we're in discussions of what that structure would look like, potentially a proposed tourism commission, more to come on that. Facilities and operations, the Welcome Center lease is looking to be renewed. It hasn't quite been renewed just yet. But we're in the process of doing that. There is a plan for an upgrade of technology in the Welcome Center, which we're really excited about. We've met with some consultants and talked about what's what we're capable of doing there. So that would be a very nice refresh to show our commitment and investment in that area. Personnel, Barbara Bowman has been hired as the interim executive director. And she will stay on for a couple more months as we begin to look for a full-time tourism manager to replace her. We'll start that process here this month, towards the end of this month. Pending a resolution from city council, and we'll probably leak that into in February and maybe early March. We have hired J.J. DeRosier as the new admin, and so he is an admin for both tourism and housing, and he's fully on board and doing a great job. The prosperity office concept, that's that that coalition of the of the three entities, that's progressing in terms of the concept. That would include tourism, once a full merger is implemented, economic opportunity and innovate innovative housing solutions, and it would be under the city manager's office. Continuing on a tourism update, personnel, in January, we hope to onboard two full-time employees and fourteen part-time employees that are all in the Welcome Center, the part-time employees are. In Q one, we'll hopefully onboard the rest of of the staff. And in Q two, hopefully before Q two, fill the empty tourism manager position. Within Visit Durango, where the city is taking ownership of the local marketing grant. Excited about that. I've worked closely with Tommy Crosby and figuring out how we bring some consistency to how we're looking at grants and disbanding them. I'll give a little bit more information on that in a second. As I stated, we'll revitalize the Welcome Center and definitely start to engage our strategic partners and see how they want to participate, not only in revitalizing the the Welcome Center, but also how we restructure the grant process. Long-term strategy is to stand up a tourism commission, complete the organizational structure, and then bring some proficiencies in how we're looking at performance, be very data-centric, and potentially look at AI utilization in terms of of how we can do some data analysis and forecasting. Given all the data streams that we have collectively, we should be able to provide more information to to our businesses on Main Street and and in other industries. Economic opportunity. This is kind of a review of two thousand and twenty-four. In the renewed grant, there's been nine projects funded at almost thirty-five thousand dollars. Durango Creates, twenty-two projects funded at seventy-six thousand dollars. And the Lagers Tax Art and Culture had thirty-three projects funded at five hundred and twelve, four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. Collectively, that represents sixty-four grants at a total of six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, four hundred and eight. And that's all been infused back into communities. So given that kind of volume, it's worth looking at and saying, how do we? How do we provide some efficiency and some processes here? And what we'll look at is using a common software. And we'll we'll also look at, can we tier these so that we have stronger impact and look at them with a strategic lens as opposed to volume-centric? The the new economic development incentive program that has not been implemented yet, but it's stood up. And that creates a pathway to retain and grow local businesses. And and I applaud this city manager for his vision and helping drive that program. I got to be on the outside when that was created, and so I I got to be part of that that process, giving feedback. And and now it's really interesting to be, and even a little ironic to be on the inside and and pushing that that program. So I'm really excited about that. In terms of economic opportunity, as I stated, Durango Crossing URA, what this URA will do is allow a hundred and fifty-four units to a hundred percent be attainable, affordable. So in order for that to happen, we have to get participation from NIR and the county. We're in the process of doing that. Regardless of if the if the participation doesn't come in, we'll still have a significant majority of of affordable and attainable units there. The there'll be an economic impact study done in this quarter. That'll evaluate the existing Lagers Arts and Tax Program for historically a hundred and nine projects at one point five million dollars being funded in the last three years. We're all anticipating to see what kind of data we can get and how we refine that program and improve it moving forward. Speaking of finding efficiencies, the the all of the grant programs will look at this tier process that I described and what would look at as a seed, growth and scale. And so the seed would be a little bit more easy entry level. The growth is, how do we, how do we grow an organization, help that organization? And then the the scale is is what what does an already legacy type of entity or business look like to to help scale using grant money? What we do not want to do is just be a line item on their operating budget, as I think historically, maybe some of that has happened, and fund day-to-day operations. We should not be trying to to keep an organization afloat, rather invest in that organization and ask them to to also strategically look at at this as an investment. We'll upgrade all of the grant applications to a platform called Submittable, which has already been implemented, and do that across all the grants that we're will be distributing. That completes my report. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you for the presentation. Yep.
Yeah, real quick, Mike, does the city or anybody have anything to do with like the application or administration process for residences at Durango?
No.
So that's all through the developer?
Yes, that's correct. So TWG is the developer. They are doing in-house property management. They have a website. It's a pretty decent website. They've already started a waiting list, and they're a hundred percent responsible for not just the qualification, but the property management of 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 those units.
Do we offer any sort of administrative oversight to ensure that they're holding?
One hundred percent. Yeah, absolutely. There's a there's oversight, reporting. And there's a an agreement in place with TWG.
Awesome. And then do we know like what's how long the waiting list is for the the initial seventy-two units?
I do not, but what I from what I've heard is as soon as they open, we should have that filled within a couple of months.
Okay, it'd be nice to know kind of what sort of need there still exists after those units get filled and see where we need to move the needle continuously.
Yeah, I think it's, I think what we're going to see is a little bit of a domino effect. Because it is thirty to sixty percent AMI, and there's a significant demand in that thirty to sixty. Right now, you probably have some folks in Esparrow that are maybe looking for a larger or different type of housing. And that what that does is free up transitional housing that we desperately need as well. So you know, as as we open up units, it it really benefits the entire housing continuum.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Any comments from online? I just want to say thank you and super excited to see everything kind of streamlined. The amount of money that we have coming in from our Lagers Tax, it's just nice that we're going to have some, you know, oversight and we can do it well. And I love that opportunity of the seed growth scale and really seeing that come to fruition. I think that's exciting.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your work. All right. Next up, we have the Durango, oh, wait, is that the Durango Creative District Quarterly Report? Or is that?
Usually in the packet. Tommy, that just might be in the packet would be my guess, hey? Because I don't see Tommy Crosby here, so I think that's just in the packet.
That's fine. Perfect. Okay. Next up, we have Safety and Quality of Life Public Safety Monthly Report with the chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor, pro temp mayor and council. Happy to be here. My name is Bryce Current. I'm the chief of police for Durango, and our plan and focus is safety and quality of life. Okay, again, our vision is one department, one community, one Durango. And we're committed to building trust, protecting the vulnerable, and preventing crime, not fighting crime, but preventing crime. Our mission is to create a safe place to live, to work and to play. And that is through three things, community oriented policing, intelligence led policing, and then precision policing. So as you know, with our social media posts, it's hashtag one Durango. So we don't feel that we just serve in the community, but we're actually a part of the community and that's our goal. So I'm going to share five quick events that have been going on around the community with some of the unhoused and some of the cleanups and just so you're aware. So we had, uh, there was a vehicle in a camp at the library for several days and we worked with her. And there was some, a rumor that we had towed her car during Christmas, uh, which is not true. We actually waited around until she could get that vehicle worked on. And she ended up selling that vehicle to a mechanic and moved in with a friend when it got cold. And then the railroad properties from 29th to 32nd, there was a lot of trash and different things there. Worked with the railroad in partnership and we were able to clean up that entire area. And also they finished the mulching and everything yesterday and we walked through there and there wasn't anybody close to that area or hanging around there. The camp at X Rock has been finished up and cleaned up in partnership with the county. And then there was a camp near Mana with about eight camps that was cleaned up and mitigated. And a lot of the individuals there are on the list for transitional housing. And the Rangers worked with those affected and focused on connecting those folks with their families and friends. And, and kept some of the stuff they weren't able to get in safe storage for them to pick up. And then the last, lastly, on the Santa Rita Bridge, uh, there was an individual down there for a little while that was on the housing list. And he was able to get connected with housing and that area was completely cleaned up. So our flock safety cameras as part of our intelligence-led policing, the camera systems. Again, it's a retroactive photograph camera system that captures license plates of folks as they come in and out of town. Allowing agencies to flag criminals, missing children, silver alerts, stolen cars and more. So these are active, these are not active cameras. They're not speed cameras. They're not red light cameras. And as the picture you can see up there is Sidney who arrested a suspect with several felony warrants in November after responding to an alert. And then we've located shoplifting suspects that have been staying in hotels locally. And also warrants entering and leaving town. And we tracked down a stolen vehicle just an hour ago with the camera from Cortez and the driver was wearing gloves. That could be a hint. And then, uh, you know, with that privacy, it's our most fundamental human right. And each citizen can log onto our system on our website and see the metrics and the dashboards for this program. Another example of how the program works is that we have access to cameras across the country. For instance, um, there was a stabbing in the county yesterday and the suspect left and was tracked through Arizona and then California and arrested in California. And we'd actually been looking for that, we would have been looking for that person here the entire time and using those resources. So we want to thank Kelly and Parks and Rec. We needed a room for somebody that was retiring after 38 years, Dex Line. And we couldn't find a room. And they spoke to some folks that had rented it and they were happy to give it up and just appreciate their customer service and partnership with everybody in the community. And so the warming center, uh, it's part of our community-led policing. In November, we were invited to meet with the community members to discuss the warming center on, and how to assist in that effort. Multiple groups were coming together and volunteering to ensure the centers open from 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM when it reaches 15 degrees or cooler. And these partnerships show how we can focus our efforts to enhance public safety. And they're open tonight and you could see the green flags at a lot of the city buildings, including the police department across the street and the library and other places that show that the, that the warming center is open. So our message to the community on this is that solutions take effort. And if you're passionate enough to post an opinion on social media, be bold enough to pitch in and help. So for Thanksgiving, we were able to spend Thanksgiving with 9R. I love these pictures and we participated in serving lunch at the schools. And it's an excellent opportunity to build trust and partnership. So we attended a funeral for Golden Police Officer Evan Darn. So Evan was struck by a drunk driver, him and his partner. And as a result, Evan died. So Durango P D, like most departments around Colorado, attended and helped with the funeral. So Officer Ethan Anderson and Detective Deandre Ball, who are in the picture, represented Durango P D as part of the honor guard. And so Commander Nick Stacy partnered, who's partnered with the Fallen Hero Foundation. He was the operations section chief for the event, including planning, coordination, procession, the route, motorcade, parking, honor guard duties and security, et cetera. So this, in November, we participated in the La Plata Forum. We met with Compañeros and Fort Lewis College to discuss immigration law in Colorado. We attended the regional law enforcement chiefs meeting, including, which includes all the enforcement agencies in the region, including the four corners outside the state. Also met with DA Sean Murray to discuss aggravated assault on our officers in the past two months. Seven cases in October and five in November. It's just hard to walk in the office and see officers typing reports with a fat lip. And so we, we discussed that and how we can partner better in that effort. I met with Southwest Community Justice Coalition to discuss future, future diversion programs as well. And Judge Margeson also met with them. And then he also met with Nina to talk about his diversion program. And we got a lot of really good compliments on the city and his presentation that he gave. And we discussed immigration law also with the Mana Board and the protections that are here in Colorado and how we operate. So and anybody's welcome to come talk to us about any of those, of those things. So as part of the community-based policing, we participated in Special Olympics train pool. So the police team said that the brakes were on when they pulled and I don't know if I believe them. But volunteer officers helped raise over $10,000 for Special Olympics. And we want to thank the community members that donated to such a fantastic event. So the 14 numbers are right where the average is, 69 calls for service in November. And that's within the range. So as far as part one offenses, so I realize our numbers here in Durango, you know, we cannot measure like a lot of major cities do. However, the numbers do help us see the correlation and the analysis helps us establish the causation, which is crucial in intelligence and precision policing, intelligence-led policing and precision policing. So this statistical report shows trends of part one crimes for November. And it correlates with over the past five years. So we had a decline in total crimes from, it was 61 in November compared to the four-year average of 68.8. And then in, and just keep in mind, when we do the monthly reports, it's better to see the trends in the quarterly. And you'll see a quarterly next month and then you'll see a yearly the month after that. And we're able to see more trends. And just because we saw a decline right there, that's not what we've been seeing in the, in the recent months. So category specific trends, so aggravated assault doubled compared to 2023 and 24, but the clearance rate was 90% as I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit in the, with the 10 ag assaults. Larceny's down 19.3% and from 2023 and 14.8 from the four-year average. And motor vehicle theft is seeing, we're seeing a steady decline in this month. And we're trying to figure that out because that's not what we're seeing over, overall in the year. But we saw a 46.7% decrease. So staying on the part one offenses and, and seeing the totality here. Nine aggravated assaults, nine were arrests, or 10 out of 10, nine were arrested and three were menacing. Five were committed on law enforcement, as I said earlier. And so other than the assaults on law enforcement, only two were physical. We had two burglaries and they're both on food trucks. And we saw that same trend last year at this exact same time. And so we're watching that and we had two stolen vehicles and two recoveries. So we continue to also partner with the big box stores and our local business owners to adjust our strategy. The increase in technology and the, and we work with the courts to build a deterrents. So the Roost, City Market and Albertsons are all putting up more cameras in partnership with us as well currently. And so with traffic, the municipal traffic citations increased by 24.4% over the four-year average. And county traffic is down 35% and county criminal is down 25%, which shows that we're using municipal court more with recent changes and negotiations. We could see that reverse back to us with a rise in our county citations. And so we'll continue to see there. But the good news is our accidents are down sharply by 47.7% from previous year and 48% from the four-year average. So we saw a significant decrease in crashes this year. And the citations increased by 25%. So there's a correlation there and maybe also it's not snowing a lot this year. So we're always trying to get to the truth. So theft, so many of the states are changing their theft laws around the country right now. So in California, there's proposition 36 that allows officers to charge a felony after a third shoplifting offense, regardless of the amount. So people are stealing just below the felony amounts. And even here in Colorado, if you steal below the $2,000, you stay out of the felony realm and, and people know that. So we're actually working with the legislators in Colorado and the other chiefs around the state to figure that one out too. And see what, you know, see what will actually work and get us to where we need to be. So there was a article in the Herald and anytime and one of, and one of my staff members provided the stats. And the stats were accurate, but I didn't know if it was the truth when I read it. And so it was that, that, you know, trespass was down, down by Rusa and the 800, 900 block in that whole area. And so, um, you know, the, so my staff reported the Herald that the, the reduced calls for service on Rusa Ave and that area were down. And after reading the article, it, it showed that our service was only slightly down, our calls for service were only slightly down, but our actual self-initiated calls or officer initiated, initiated calls were cut in half. So I didn't know if we were just doing less work or if we're seeing less people. And so did a little more research and found out that our team was down there every single day and that they're seeing half of the people they were seeing last year. And they're making sure, they're ensuring that somebody's down there doing the same work we were doing last year every single day. And I also took a walk down there and I've never seen certain places that have, that haven't been clean in the last four years that are clean now and including under the Ninth Street Bridge. So, um, so I do think there's a lot of truth in that article in the way it was presented. So do we still, uh, do we still have some issues? See what slide we're on. Yep. Okay. We still have some issues, yeah, but we're seeing about half the things we've seen in the past down there. And since our increased partnership with Albertsons, they are, they're doing security patrols three times a day around the store and around the back. They've encountered fewer and fewer people. And they're also increasing their landscape and they have some other plans. They're going to increase their cameras and they're more diligent about removing vehicles in overnight in that area. And I know we've had some people come up and counsel and talk about that as well. The last thing is staffing. In November, we were completely full with our certified positions, which if you look around the country right now, that's a, that's a monumental task. And I, you know, I do think it's definitely our culture, but also think it's this community that provides an experience that most people can't afford. And it's a safe place to live and this is, this is a destination town. People want to be here. And we're hiring very good applicants. We're just not hiring people that pass. We have a really experienced team, hiring good people. And we're teetering on that full mark all the time right now and looking to over hire actually in those positions. So any questions?
It's great. Thank you for the update. Any?
Yeah, real quick, I'm going back to like the warming center. I assume the community compassion outreach is the organization that's facilitating that?
100%.
Okay. Yeah. And then is, is it, where's the location? Where, where are they?
Down by the dog park. And we, they have, uh, there's, they're needing as many volunteers as they can get. And normally the, the volunteers they need the most right now are probably two o'clock in the morning till about six. And those are the hardest hours. And if you look on the weather app right now, um, there's going to be several days in a row that are below 15. So I think it's going to be open for several days.
Have you haven't had any officer initiated or calls for service at, at that area, like when they're holding?
No, 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 sir. And they want us to go by and they want us to just get to know everybody and have a presence, but we haven't been called there.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
I was just gonna comment on the staffing if I could with.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm so impressed to hear that our staffing is up to date. I know for years we've been, you know, uh, below staffing levels that we've desired. So that's really good news to hear. To, to reiterate, you said we're at full capacity, maybe even over?
Yes, uh, we, with a recent retirement, we might be one under, but we have like three or four in the pipe that are actually laterals and we have people going to the academy. But I'm going to give that to the previous chief. I mean, it's literally, we have an amazing culture and it's been built on a foundation. And, and yes, it's a destination town. People want to be here. But this is an amazing department. We have a really good team.
I just recall in years past how difficult it's been to compete with the front range with higher salaries up there. And we do the training here and then they leave us for the front range. So this is really, a really great update. I'm very glad to hear that. Thank you.
Well, our council also approved a step plan not too far back. So that's also helping with succession planning.
Excellent. Thanks so much.
I think Olivier might have his hand raised as well.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the update, Chief. You covered quite a bit of ground here. I'm, I'm always concerned about the homeless and how we treat them and the options that they have. And it's good to hear and see about the warming shelter. I think that's, that's definitely needed in this, this climate. But it also includes the, um, the impacts to our community. And you mentioned the various cleanups, uh, which was quite significant, I believe, near Esparro Apartments. It included about six truckloads. Who, who does those cleanups?
So that's a good question, counselor. Steve Barkley, Tosh Black, you know, I could name all of them. I mean, it's amazing the work they do. We also contracted out when it's, when it's just really dangerous and there's a lot of needles and other things, but we still have to collect those. A lot of that's done by our city staff and our city employees. And sometimes it's all hands on deck. Everybody from the department will chip in. But we also have a budget for that and thank goodness, you know, that, that gets approved because that's, it's a lot of work. And so, yeah, some of it's contracted out as well.
Yeah, I, I just hope you all stay safe because I think that's not just the cleanup, but also hazardous materials and bad, bad items put in general. So thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for all your efforts and work. And I just want to say thank you especially for our partnerships with some of the businesses that are kind of stepping up and, and really working with us to make our community safe. So it seems like everything's going in the right direction.
Yes, thanks, ma'am.
All right, Katie's up next. I think you're just part of the same, yes.
Greetings, Council, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Katie Fox, Emergency Communications Director. I'm hoping to highlight our successes that we had in 2024 and just touch on where we're headed in the upcoming year. I'm going to keep it broad and brief, but please don't hesitate to reach out if you have further questions or want more information. I'd like to start out by recognizing our quarter four lifesavers. So each patient on these incidents was in cardiac arrest when the call came through to our center. All three patients were successfully transported with a pulse to mercy. So congratulations and big thanks to Sarah Shelby and Erin for their lifesaving work on those calls. Onto our big picture 2024 successes. This is a busy slide, so I'd just like to highlight a couple of items. Our monthly citizen survey continues to have a return rate of approximately 40% and indicates high customer satisfaction with our call-taking services, the highest score for our citizen survey being five. Excuse me. I'd like to point out that our answer time percentages continue to greatly exceed the required percentages. And then finally, I just want to touch on the fact that we reviewed approximately 850 incidents in the first three quarters of 2024. I'm extremely proud of those numbers because I'm really clear that our dedication to robust quality assurance is part of the reason we maintain service standards, regardless of any staffing shortages or administrative turnover or other challenges that we face. I'd also like to thank Council and the CMO for their support or for your support in approving our budget to bring on a QA supervisor position. That's going to allow us for even more robust incident review and to support that continual enhancement of our services. Unfortunately, this slide is a little bit stale as we've had a couple of staffing changes in the first week. Unfortunately, this slide is a little bit stale as we've had a couple of staffing changes in the first week of the new year. However, I will highlight that we do continue to see consistent recovery from the thirty three percent staffing we were experiencing in June of twenty twenty three. And our admin team is strong, built out and almost fully filled out. A huge success for us has been the decrease in our overall turnover. That's both for tenured staff and also for our trainees. This graph on the left here highlights the annual trends in our center and you can see we're well below industry averages for our turnover rates. We have had successful in-house promotions and that includes Anna Harris. She's been with us for six years and she's now a shift supervisor. And then I also want to nod to our two lateral hires, Amelia Aguilar and Sarah Hart. They completed our training program in record time in about fifteen weeks. The average time is anywhere from twenty six to fifty two weeks for full proficiency. And again, really appreciate the CMO and also HR's support and assistance in helping us draft a lateral hire policy so that we could bring these two on board at competitive wages. And it's really impacted our staffing positively. Finally, the biggest success for our center is our culture. Leadership expert, author and speaker, Rajiv Peshwaraya says, "The most successful public sector organizations are those where a culture of collaboration and integrity flourish." And we have built that and we are continuing to build that up at the comm center. To wrap it up, I'll briefly touch on the ways that we're looking ahead. So we will continue to focus on staffing support and staffing levels to keep retention high and keep our culture on point. Part of this is going to be at our first quarter all staff meeting next week. We're going to work to update our departmental strategic plan to better align with the city and support the city's overall strategic plan and tactical execution strategies. Along with, we will be drafting an updated departmental vision for the coming years. And then finally, we are at for bid for a new phone system this year, which is really exciting for us. And I'm looking forward to leveraging technology creatively and appropriately to enhance our operations and decrease our workload and then also increase our service levels across the board. And that's all I got for you. Any questions?
Excellent. Great work. Any comments? Anything online?
Great, thank you.
All right, next up we have Library Services Department report. Hello, Luke.
Hello. We had a wonderful month as usual that we're covering and I'm looking forward to next month covering our year end statistics, which look to be very strong. I say here, we're happy to see moderate increases in circulation and that could be strange to say, why are you happy about moderate increases? As I've talked about all year, and I just want to bring back occasionally, we do not want to see large increases in circulation in certain other usage areas that then unfortunately increase our costs that we can't necessarily meet. So we're really happy to see this slowly growing, which is where it should be because our use is already so darn high and above state averages. So we're very happy about that. And as you can see, we also saw some great increases in programming. That's one we don't really mind seeing such large increases in as we see some months and year over year because it doesn't really change the cost of the program much. In fact, it lowers the per usage cost. And as I mentioned, when we talked about our quarterly report, we are anywhere from one point five to double the state average when it comes to users per program. So we get so much bang for the user's buck when we do our program. So we're extremely happy to see those numbers. You'll see in the picture here, that's me as Santa from Timu because the city couldn't afford the real Santa when we did our last trivia night. Patron support has done really well. Our reference, however, is is one of the ways we look at that support number, but we do know that that's something we want to look at capturing different ways in the coming year of twenty twenty five, well, the year that we're in now. Boy, that happened fast. Because it's still variable. When we look year over year, when we look at every other stat, we can see a trend. And when we look at reference, it's just a weird zigzag. So even though we've tried capturing it differently, it still remains really variably. We went from doing it one day a week as a sample to a week out of a month sample. And it became more variable. So it's 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 a really strange one. We're going to keep watching that, but we do see to see really great growth in cardholders month after month, which is our favorite statistic. Because we love seeing so much of the community, not just come in and use our library casually, but make that commitment. I'll also say I forgot to mention it over outreach, but I wanted just to piggyback on Bryce's comment. The Community Compassion Outreach Warming Center announced this morning they will be open every day this this week through Sunday for sure. So that's already been planned. And we put up flyers around the library's entrances and exits so people can see that as they're going in because we we know that people don't quite understand the green flag system yet. Another thing for the outreach is we, the library additionally is joining the Southwest Justice Coalition Group. Southwest Unity Justice Coalition, it's two Cs. And we're real, it's a monthly meeting and we've had a member on it with our incomparable Censor ASNR for several months, but I'll be taking over the reins of that because they're going to help us with some really awesome operational support ideas that you'll hear about in the coming months. And our last major area, library is space. As you see, really nice increases there as well. People are using the library more and they're using it longer. So while our visitation remains slight increases, people are just using it for much longer periods of time and for a huge variety of uses. So we're really happy to see that. And we'll be back next month, as I said, with the year end report, but we'll also have an update pretty soon, probably in February, March, about how our library's tactical plan is going to borrow heavily from the city's operational plan. We're sort of taking our strategic plan to the really tactical level and making sure that it melts perfectly within the city's operational plan. So we can be more transparent than ever about how the library accomplishes its goals and, you know, serves the city as a full department. And that is all we have for this month.
Excellent. I feel like you're gonna, every month you come in, it's like an increase and increase and increase at some point. Do you have plans to build a bigger library or?
That's why we're really excited to see some of the usage that is more cost prohibitive. Like flat visitation, how many people are are building can fit and circulation, how much materials we have to buy because if they're checked out too much and our hold rates increase at a certain rate. We don't want to see those increase too quickly. I will say one of the things we're going to be excited about in twenty five is our Technical Services Director has found a way to really map the usage of some of our circulation in a way that takes future purchasing and based on the actual circulation as opposed to just, you know, having to do that one by one. It'll be really data focused. And so that'll be able to do five year trend analysis when we look at our circulation, not just how much we need for circulation as a whole, but where it's going to go. And really include voice of the customer. You know, we lower something because it doesn't get used as much. But then other factors like interlibrary loan request or purchase requests or holds increase too much, we can then buttress it. But no, we're really happy to see these usages to be, you know, in a way that we can, as much as you can forecast with city budgets that are have to be done on a yearly basis, that we should be very well in supports with our library building for quite a while. And that's because, you know, so much of the usage does already come from outside of the city. About half of our users who are library cardholders are living in the county or or elsewhere. And so they're already used to the traffic patterns of that. So we don't necessarily need like a northern branch or a western branch or eastern branch, regardless of where city population goes. Where we're at, people are just coming to us in droves. So we're very happy about that. That's a great question.
Cool. Thank you. Any other questions? Online? All right, next up we have our Parks and Recreation Monthly Report.
Good afternoon. Scott McLean, Assistant Parks Director. And I've got a fourth quarter report for Parks and Recreation, everything we've had going on. So. Reports divided up into we've got three divisions of Parks and Recreation, the admin parks, and then the recreation side of that. So our presentation is divided up that way as well. So starting with the administration on the business operations. And customer service. Customer service at our business office at the rec center, we've changed ours to go from nine to four. This will help facilitate, give our admin staff a bit more time, an hour in the morning, an hour in the evening to focus on email, electronic responses, getting back to people that way as well. So hoping to make some improvement there. And then also I've changed our scholarship applications from an on paper forum to online. Again, that that should help more people have access to that and a better system, more efficient there. Some of the agreements that we got in place last quarter, Drango Mesa Park got the long term agreement for planning, development, operations, maintenance in place. This will provide direction for the next couple of years with Drango Mesa Park. And then also I've got the serial funding agreement in line for twenty twenty five that falls in line with budget that we have for for projects this coming year. And then with soil, which is a partnership with School District nine R, an agreement in place that was executed last quarter, setting us up for another year of partnership with our soil garden up there at River View. In this category, we also just share that some professional development and training that we had three staff attend the National Recreation and Parks Association Conference this fall. And then we had four staff that attended the state conference. Both of those just great opportunities to kind of see what other people in the world are doing, compare notes, step back and just look at things a little bit more bigger picture. So good, good experience there. Community events. Little bit slower than summertime, but still some good events happening. We had downtown Halloween, the cowboy gathering in November and then singing with Santa and Noel Night in December. If you were downtown for Noel Night, it was great, great turnout and good to see everybody downtown. And then with marketing and communication, have really made an effort this last quarter to up our social media posting and finding that to be effective way to keep the community informed there. So. With the Parks Group, we'll start with cemetery. We worked with, there's an organization, Rees Across America. There's a local group that every year we're cemetery staff partners with them. They come up and they place holiday wreaths at all the veterans, gravestones. That that's a great event that happened. And then just a little bit of down season before we get snow, been working with GIS. We've got all the grave sites and the computer system with an off slow photos of gravestones, trying to get that updated for the last year during the season. Design and development, a number of things going on. So Enamus River Trail projects. If you recall, we've had three projects that have been in design. One of them went out to bid last year, ended up not getting bids. It went out to get the bid in the fall. Ended up getting bid, have a notice of award that project shall start this this spring. And that's being handled through CIP, but just wanted to mention that. The other two projects that we were designing kind of simultaneously were the piece from Santa Rita to Nature's Oasis and then the one from Rain Park up to Memorial Park. Both of those are, one of them designs complete, the other, the consultants finishing up the final review sets. We've got both of those in line now. So for your two year budgets, we've got those plan sets ready to go and put those out to bid. Smart one sixty. Continue to make make steps. Segment one, which is the piece that's closest to Sail Barn Trailhead, so coming up from there. That sign is at ninety percent. We've been working with BLM and CDOT on the permitting to go across their property. BLM, their their staff person that handles the permitting, they have not, that position's been vacant, it sounds like for over a year. So they've got a large backlog and not a designated staff person. So we keep poking. We're trying to keep that move forward. But trying to get that to a place where they can get it out to bid. And then the other section we're working on priority is a segment four, which is a piece that goes through John Gillen's property. Had some meetings with him last quarter. And then with South Drango Sanitation District, which had approached John on having some better access to the sewer line they have go through there. So we've been working with South Drango Sanitation District and our consultant to try to come up with a way to partner on that and consultants right now working on what that would look like as far as splitting out tasks. And then we'll come up with some sort of agreement with South Drango to to split that and try to keep moving that forward with John. So. Green Mount Cemetery, we have budget for twenty five for both the water line, two projects. One would be a water line for irrigation. So getting that design completed this spring and then ready to bid for the fall. So continued to work on that last quarter. And then also working on the overall design, which we would hope that that could fall in place for twenty six. Chapman Hill. That project got completed final quarter. Talk about that a bit more operations in a second, but still be working on design for some work at the base, retaining a wall between the parking lot and the ski hill, which provide a little bit of space for a little bit of patio gathering area for parents, folks to kind of watch what's going on the hill and take it in. And then staff, the landscape architect Rachel Hart, spent quite a bit of time putting together a landscaping right of way guide. So we work with community development and landscape reviews, tend to get a lot of questions on treatment and within the right of ways. So pull together a lot of the information we have, put it together in a guide. This also will coincide with the state's direction for non-functional turf, which is just not using turf grass where you don't have to. So we'll provide some good guidance and kind of everything in one place for both both city staff, city projects, but also for consultants or community development. Natural Resources Open Space, some projects going on the last quarter as far as trail work that did some reconstruction of Ned's Hill and Hillcrest. Just some drainage work on the trails and trail improvements there. Did a new alignment at the top of Chapman Hill that accommodates the development that happened with the ski area. And then also did some work, had a contractor be working about a three, three quarters of a mile on Horse Gulch Road, starting at the top, working our way down. That work will continue into the springtime. Revegetated some wildlife area that had been mitigated or sorry wildfire mitigation that had occurred at Twin Buttes, about six acres there. And then also reseeded on just some vegetation work at Drango Mesa Park along the trails that have been built. Thought as we get some of that seed down this time of year, hopefully we get some snow and then it comes springtime that thought all germinates. Some good news, we had a great outdoor Colorado GoCo grant that we applied for. We were successful. So we've got a grant that will help us with ten weeks of conservation quarter time. So next summer we can kind of organize and find where we can use them. But that's just bringing a conservation core group in. They do maintenance work in the open space for us. Lake Night Horse closed for the season mid-November. Up about five percent from where we were last year on visits up there. So that was good. We've got our five year, we worked with the Bureau of Reclamation and it's a five year budget cycle with them. So we do our five year budget submitted with them. And then the entry decontamination station, made a lot of progress this last quarter there. Or about a week, next week, we've got our final walk through up there, get a punchless to them and that that project will be complete. So that's exciting to have that done as well. Parks and Recreation. In October. November, still are working on winterizing irrigation systems. And then moved into some maintenance type projects, clean up that that continues through the winter. Wanted to shout out to Enamus High School. Part of the Drango Creates Grant, that was a grant that was awarded to shop class at Drango High School. So we have a new art piece up by Thirty Second Street, a bench that was installed. So exciting to see another piece of art along the River Trail. I think it was also exciting just to see that high school students have that opportunity to to put that together. So. Forestry Management Plan, a lot of time went into finishing that up. We got our final report on that just before the holidays. So that's wrapped up and something that we can start to work on next step and implementing it. Recreation. With Chapman Ski Hill, that's a little till open December thirteenth and then Platter Lifted Sins opened and started doing lessons there as well. Looking for some more snow, but otherwise things are going well there. Chapman Rain hosted a holiday ice show on the twentieth, had a packed house for that. And then also the Figure Skaters traveled to Aspen for a competition in December as well. Gymnastics, it's the largest gymnastic team that we've had in history. So sixty seven total gymnasts there. The gymnastics center staff put on a mock meet just to get them set up for some of the traveling and meets they'll have this winter. And Rec Center continues to stay busy. Sixty seven fitness classes per week, dropping the gym. It's been busy with pickleball, volleyball, basketball, averaging nine hundred and eleven. Averaging nine hundred and eleven visits per day. Uh, Black Friday, we had a special sale, sold three hundred and fifty seven punch passes in one week. So that was good and kind of fun to just have a a special day for that. And then new programs that we introduced at the Rec Center for uh fourth quarter included Dungeons and Dragons, Letters to Santa, uh preschool programs and teen art lounge. And are excited about uh the new approved uh programs manager that that will be hiring and and hope to continue to expand those offerings. So. So we have for parks and rec, but any questions?
Lot going on. Thank you. Any comments? Anything online? All right. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Next up, we have our aviation department monthly report, reliable infrastructure and community connectivity. Tony.
Good afternoon, uh mayor and council, Tony Vicary, aviation director at the Durango La Plata County Airport, here to provide your brief monthly update on airport operations. Uh, as usual, just start off with a quick run through on some airport metrics. Of note, these are all through November. Final December numbers are not quite finalized and in most cases. So airline enplanements, passenger traffic was up fifteen percent through November. Expect the December numbers to finalize at or above that figure. We'll probably see that tick up a little bit. December traffic was extremely strong. Uh, of note, we saw particularly strong traffic in the last quarter of this year around the two major holiday travel periods, one being Thanksgiving and the second one around the Christmas holiday. Uh, around Thanksgiving, both the week prior and after, we saw traffic ni- up nineteen percent over twenty twenty three travel on the Thanksgiving holiday. And that figure increased even more around the Christmas holiday with traffic uh before and after the holiday up twenty four percent over twenty twenty three. So once we finalize those December numbers, I think you'll see that we uh ended the year north of fifteen percent higher than twenty twenty three, which was in itself a record year. Um, as I've noted before, we're we're well on track. We actually broke our annualized passenger traffic record from twenty twenty three before we even started the month of December. Um, so we're flying by those records and we'll have those finalized soon. A couple of other notes, uh consistent with what we've seen before, we're continuing to see very very stable increases on both our parking lot volume and as well as rental car contract days. Uh, continuing to be indicative of strong growth through both local use as well as visitation to the airport. So seeing consistent growth on both of those main platforms. Um, and then also main themes we've seen carry through the year with concession revenue and general aviation traffic continuing to be up robustly over last year. Uh, here you can just see the visualization of in plain passenger traffic, the green line representing twenty twenty four. You can see um each of the eleven months that we finalized so far have been individual record months uh throughout the calendar year. Uh, December is all but certain to also be the case. So looking at uh record strength throughout the year, regardless of the month we're looking at. Um, over to airline route network updates, uh the major update for council is an update that we shared uh publicly in December uh with United expanding their seasonal service to Houston's Bush Intercontinental Airport. Um, that route has been served the last two summers in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four uh with weekend only Saturday, Sunday service. Um, during the pandemic, that route went away. It was actually being flown also in a similar weekend pattern in twenty nineteen. Went away for a few years in the pandemic. Um, the last two summers have been very successful. We've seen steady growth in terms of utilization of both of the the weekend route options. Um, specifically in twenty twenty four, our load factors we saw this year were very strong. Uh, and that helped us with the ongoing business case with United to expand that. And we are happy to announce that we were successful in that. And United will be initially launching this as Saturday only service in the early portion of the service period, which basically starts um around Memorial Weekend through late June and then from June twenty sixth through August eighteenth, that route will be flown on a daily basis. A pretty significant breakthrough going to daily services, a major commitment from the airline because they have to commit significant staffing and equipment resources to be able to serve that route on a daily basis. Um, so it really just shows the confidence that United has on this particular route to be able to show strong profitability with the increased frequency. Uh, so we'll be looking to see how that route performs this summer. And then um assuming it does continue to show strength, this really gives us yet another platform and jumping point uh to continue discussions with United with the ultimate goal being trying to push towards year round daily service to a second hub with United, which really opens up substantial amount of connectivity and travel itinerary options for the public. Um, but step says we go, the next major one is is pushing into this seasonal daily service. So that's the major update. Uh, other than that, relatively consistent service, uh the airline flight schedules for uh United remain fixed at six daily. That's a consistent year round schedule. As I've noted with council before, American runs a little bit more variable schedule. They tend to ramp up more during our our peak summer season and pull their frequencies down a little more strategically during the uh slightly slower winter months. Um, and we're again seeing that play out here in in twenty four to twenty five. Uh, just a quick run through of projects here, um two slides, first one just talking about re-appropriated projects that'll be coming into twenty twenty five that are already on the books. Uh, I think the council is is quite aware of these, uh two of them being our terminal projects, phase one A and phase one B. As we've noted before, phase one A is substantially complete, all construction is complete. The only reason that it's trailing into twenty twenty five is just that it's a large project. So there's a lot of closeout endeavors. We're still have to pay out retainage to the contractor. And we're working to close out the grants that support this project through the FAA. So there'll be a little bit of trailing expense into the first quarter here as we close out phase one A. Uh, but construction is complete and has been for so for about a month at this point. Uh, phase one B continues to hum along smoothly. As you know, we broke ground in October. Um, the decided lack of snowfall, although somewhat depressing for Chapman Hill, as was previously noted. Um, the silver lining is it's been extremely good for uh winter weather construction. Uh, typically it's a little bit challenging to be doing earthwork, utility and concrete work this time of year. Instead, it's actually been quite conducive to so. So the construction team uh with none construction has been moving along ahead of schedule uh for the terminal. At this point, the the concrete, final concrete slab was poured last Friday. Um, and currently working on starting to erect the steel uh of the structure on the building, which will be ongoing through the month of January. So actually ahead of schedule a little bit on the phase one B project, which is exciting. And then the last two reappropriation projects, one is our wastewater system upgrades. This project is under uh contract with Canyon Construction, a local general contractor. Uh, but they won't be able to break ground until the spring when we have reliable conditions for that effort. Um, and then lastly, we've been waiting for a year and a half for our aircraft rescue firefighting vehicle to finally be delivered. Uh, latest update from the manufacturer, we expect that in the huh, in the uh first quarter here. So we should in the next couple of months have that on hand, which would be exciting. And then just a pretty long list here of new twenty twenty five projects. I won't go through these all individually, just a couple of highlights here. Um, probably the most uh publicly noticeable will be the very first one there, which is the next phase of our parking lot expansion. As we continue to see growth in passengers, that's also putting pressure on our parking lots. Uh, we saw that particularly exaggerated during those holiday periods. I referenced earlier, both Thanksgiving and and Christmas maxed out airport parking uh and pushed us into overflow conditions. Um, this project will be out to bid shortly and we're anticipating construction beginning in the May-June timeframe. That'll be adding approximately a hundred and fifty paved parking spaces to our inventory that already sits at one thousand one hundred and fifty. So continuing to try to expand parking in concert with the growth we're seeing on the traffic side. Um, the next two projects there are federally supported projects with two supporting grants, both the um one navigational aid replacement on our airfield as well as a new snow removal equipment purchase. And then you can see the variety of other projects that I'd be happy to take questions about, but a little bit smaller and more behind the scenes in that front. And then just wrapping up, uh just a couple of photos here. This is a little outdated because we put these slides together as we're moving along in construction. Um, this was the final earthwork before the slab was poured on phase one B of the terminal expansion that's since been completed. And then also note, um in concert with the community development uh department with the city, the Common Threads art installation was completed at the airport in the month of December. Uh, really cool win for the city as a whole to be able to push that project across the finish line. Uh, unbiased, but I think the ultimate location at the airport turned out excellent. Um, it's extremely visible to the public. We have half a million people, uh just passengers using the airport on an annual basis, not including pickup and drop off folks. So there's uh well over half a million people transiting by this. Every single individual leaving the airport terminal complex has to drive by this. There's only one way out of the airport. Uh, and so you, it's very difficult to get a more visible location. It's also a low speed traffic area. Um, you typically traffic is traveling between ten and twenty miles an hour. So it's better opportunity to really get a full visual of what those those panels are meant to to indicate and and represent in our community uh on that front. So very pleased with how that turned out and excited to have that installed here in the community. Uh, and with that, I would just take any questions.
That is so exciting. It's finally installed. Then uh Ben and Min and I was on the um creative or the Arts Commission when we were trying to get it installed on main. And so I'm super excited that it is in and ready to go. You've been busy. Any comments for Tony?
Yeah, maybe just real quick, do you know if there will be any landscaping or lighting for the during the the Common Threads?
Yeah, so there's no lighting planned uh currently, aside from just adjacent lighting coming off of uh adjacent parking lots essentially. Uh, there is some final landscaping that's in process right now. There'll be kind of a cobble rock landscape around it. Um, there was grass there existing, but it was sprinkled irrigated land uh in front of it and it was gonna uh end up getting sprayed by sprinklers and cause premature rust on the paneling. Um, so we actually removed that sprinkling in the area and it'll be kind of a nice clean cobble landscape around the the panels.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Well, good job.
Thank you.
Yes, and thanks for updating everyone on the parking issue, Tony. Um, I know that the airport commission has been talking about the parking issue a lot. Um, so I'm glad you touched on that. And I just wanted to add that the Common Threads is just lovely out there. It looks so great. So thank you.
Yep, thank you. I would just, I guess, one parting comment, um speaking of of art. Um, that particular, the Common Threads installation was a city lodgers tax funded entity. The airport was ultimately selected as a location, but it wasn't an airport led project. But similarly, or a little bit different, I suppose, on the art front, um of note, in our future terminal project, we do have several art locations tabbed in the uh future one B expansion areas. Um, so little this, the Common Threads is kind of a great launch to what we think will be an improved actual uh sort of art collection essentially at the airport. Now, we actually issued a call for artists in November um that was recently closed. We have a selection committee evaluating the first three art placements, permanent art placements within the future one B new baggage claim space that's under construction today. Um, so we look forward to being able to announce those relatively soon. And then um ribbon cut those in conjunction with the overall terminal, you know, new baggage claim delivery here this upcoming summer. So um, stand by for more community art coalition efforts at the airport.
Great, thank you. All right, next up, we have our Public Works Department monthly update. Good afternoon, Mayor Council, Laura Rick from Public Works. It's snowing outside. And I brought some stormwater pipe. Show and tell. All right, so I'm gonna have to skip over some of this stuff, but I'll hit the highlights. Um, at the water plant, the Florida Outfall Project reached substantial completion. All we have to do now is wrap up the control system, but water has been flowing through it since October. And two isolation valves between the wastewater plants digesters failed and due to their location and their depth, we had to contract it out because it was right next to them and our crews, it was like fifteen feet down. We didn't have the shoring and the safety equipment necessary. So keeping our staff safe contracted that out and got those valves fixed. And what was interesting is that the work ended up costing us about thirteen thousand dollars. It was to replace two fifty cent parts. Yeah, there are shear pins, they're meant to break so that the valve gearbox doesn't break, but this is not an uncommon thing where something really small and cheap ends up breaking and it costs a lot of money to replace it. But the gearbox would have been way more expensive to replace. All right, the C and D crew, um they had an eventful November. They uh provide some critical services for containing a sanitary sewer overflow that occurred in the Patchy Mobile Home Park property. Uh, because it was on private property, it was the mobile home parks issue to deal with, but we contained it so that it didn't reach the stormwater system or the Enemus River and then just aided them in helping clean up. Um, and then the distribution crew, the first two pictures that you see, uh, they found a curb stop that needs to be repaired, but it was completely encased in roots. So you can see the picture of the vector in that hole and all the roots that they removed. So this is kind of helping us lead to some codes and standards updates that would set limits on how close you can put a meter box to a planted tree. Otherwise you end up with situations like this. They also found a lead pack joint which was leaking and this is another not uncommon thing to find in our aging system. Um, a lead pack joint that was leaking and rather than throwing a coupling on it, it was located in an area that needed to have more isolation valves so that we could minimize the amount of uh customers that are out of service. So rather than slapping on a coupling, they replaced it with an isolation valve. And it gave that area of town much more flexibility next time we gotta go back there. Uh, the streets crew tore down that large concrete wall behind North City Market, the old recycle drop off. And they replaced ninety feet of storm pipe in the alleyway by the ore house. That's where this came from. The bottom of the old corrugated metal pipe completely rotted away as you can see. And uh they replaced it with some plastic pipe to prevent future erosion. So we have pretty corrosive soils downtown, pretty much all the way up to Junction Street. So this is an issue for any metal pipe. So choosing your pipe type and choosing the right bedding material is really crucial into the longevity of our infrastructure. All right, trash and recycle, they hired a new uh solid waste operator. So they're up to full staff. And our new solid waste manager starts January twenty first. And we stole him out of Texas. And the crews have been, um or actually the the new routing hardware and software was just put into our our trash and recycle trucks last month. And that's going to really increase our video capabilities inside and outside of the trucks. So it'll help with safety. It's going to help with uh making sure that pickups are actually done. Um, and if people call in to say it wasn't done, we can look back on video footage to verify. And it's also going to help us, if there's any sort of accidents that happen, we can see those on camera. So that'll help us determine what happened. And as the construction season ends, um or ended in November, pretty much, the inspectors and the uh project managers and capital improvements are already working on next season. So bids went out for College and Eighth, Santa Rita Entrance Road. And they're going out soon for the Rock Ridge Pump Station replacement and for the eighth of sewer line replacement. Uh, as was mentioned before, Chapman Hill was completed in November. And we just wanted to give a shout out to the project manager, Gordon Rhodes, for getting that project done. It was a really complicated project done in a complicated place, requiring specialized equipment and a really dedicated staff to get it done. So thanks, Gordon. Um, the Lake Night Horse project is one project that is going to be continuing through the winter. Uh, they're gonna, they're not stopping for a winter shutdown. But two fifty, two fifty one and North College, those were stopped for the winter. They'll start up in probably March. And two fifty, two fifty one, that's going to continue from East Enemus Village Drive toward the Metz Lane intersection and then a little bit north and south of the intersection. Uh, North College Drive, that's also a really complicated project. And it took a long time to get it going because we had a lot of old failed valves on our water system in the area, which meant that we had to expand the outages to be able to replace those valves so that we could actually start the work. So in twenty twenty four though, we completed the installation of the new water mains, um, the service lines and a lot of the storm drain system. So in twenty twenty five, we're going to wrap up a few things with the water system. Continue work on the storm and do spot repairs and replacements on the sewer system. Then we'll shift to the surface treatments for traffic calming and curb and gutter new pavement. In engineering, phase one plans for Durango Mesa Entrance Road and the water line were accepted and the bids closed in no- in uh December. And in stormwater, the block fifty four alley project was awarded for construction. And then lastly, our public outreach and education efforts have been really effective this year. Since we started our weekly in-house operator trainings, um, it just in February, we've gone from nine certification total in the collections and distribution division to twenty two. So we've seen a really big increase in the pass rate on exams. And we hosted our last two trainings of the year in um November with the sewer collections training. And then we jointly hosted S G M's Fall Forum on Water and Wastewater Operations. And that, over the nine, over the seven months that we've been hosting these trainings, we've hosted nine regional trainings, over two hundred and fifty water and wastewater operators from the region. And we're going to be adding more next year. But what's cool about this is that the more people that we get from outside to come to these trainings, it reduces the cost for our operators to attend it. So two of those trainings ended up being totally free for us, which would have cost thirty grand to send all of our people to trainings. So we saved a lot of money. And I'll end there so that the next person can go. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Any something to add, council online?
All right, next up.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We have engaged and informed community with our Community Engagement and Public Information Monthly Report. We thought you were gonna get out of it.
I did. It was really close.
I have 12 minutes for you, so.
All right, I'll keep it brief. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Clancy Nixon. I am the Community Engagement Specialist for the City of Durango. I'm here presenting the monthly report for our community engagement efforts for the month of November. And this is in support of our strategic plan goals of engaged and informed community. November, you know, November, December, we slowed down a little bit as far as our classic community engagement efforts go with specific projects and things. But we did have Nerds Night Out trivia. We had Police Department City Hall Open House. That was our our biggest attendance that we saw with 33 attendees. Again, that continues to be a very positive. That was very positive feedback that we received in in that third and final open house that we did with that project and a lot of walking down memory lane from community members and people just really excited that we've taken ownership of that space and that historical gem in our community. The Neighborhood Walk and Roll, Part Due, up at the Hillcrest Neighborhood. And then we also did a West Park Avenue Traffic Calming Community slash Neighborhood Meeting. Engaged Durango continues to be a really wonderful resource that we have for our engagement efforts. You can see here, our numbers look like they've slowed down again in conjunction with with some of the things going on with projects. We had a big migration of our projects moving over to the Engaged Durango website from our classic website. So you see some slightly different numbers than what you have been seeing in the past. I think that migration has officially kind of concluded of of moving things over. Some highlights that we have for how we're utilizing that, you know, it's a really versatile tool that we have for the city. As far as our engagement goes, we have things like focus group applications on there. That Stormwater Focus Group that we have, that application is on and it closes tomorrow, I think the end of the day. We also have the Rock Ridge Pump Station, how you want it to look for kind of that neighborhood. We did some door hangers and things like that over there. So that survey is actually up on there as well as the West Park Avenue Traffic Calming Survey is up. So folks can look at that conceptual design and weigh in for that neighborhood. So some upcoming engagement opportunities that we have, Nerds Night Out Trivia is taking place on the 16th over at Esoterra at 6:30. It's growing in popularity. We had a pretty busy one last month. And then the Engaged Durango Forums resume after the holidays, so January 28th. And Mike French is going to be presenting for that one about affordability in Durango. And Stormwater Focus Group again closes tomorrow. And we're going to be doing a Welcome to the City event for the West Side Mobile Home Park. It was originally slated for the 30th, but we felt like snow down week maybe isn't the best week for that. So. Any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. Any questions? Can we get the Engaged Durango Forums on our City Council calendar? I know it was last year.
Yeah.
Just, I know they're not required, but I like to just know that they're there.
Definitely. And they've changed the location, I should I should mention. So we're going to the rec center for this year.
Excellent. And then I do have one question on engagement. I just sent out a couple of emails, and so I just wanted to get your thoughts and feedback, making sure they're the same as my thoughts. For Parks and Rec, we're getting ready to potentially go out for reauthorization. And there's some citizens that are concerned about, since we don't have a Parks and Rec Board anymore, like prioritizing projects and stuff. And I wanted to get your thoughts. We have a master plan. We have the board, the the prioritization of projects that the board did last year. We have master plans that will get updated on a, what, 10 year basis or something like that-ish?
Seven to 10.
So if we're gonna re and reprioritize projects every maybe couple of three years, would you anticipate a focus group around those projects? Or how do you envision? Because this is new. We just got rid of, we just consolidated boards and commissions. So just want your thoughts.
It's a great question. I actually was just sending a team's message to our budget crew about this of how can we map this out so to make it really easy for community members? Something that we can get to them that they know exactly how, where and when to provide their feedback. And it's going to be different for each department and each project, which is kind of the challenge. And so we're looking at that from like budget request kind of point of view. But also, you know, last year, one of our Engaged Durango Forums that happened in May, we did present all of those like in order of highest priority to lowest priority by department for folks to weigh in on and then also put it out on Engaged Durango. So there's that option as well. But definitely looking at that kind of in detail right now. It will take some time just because of how different it is from different departments, divisions, projects, etc.
That's on your radar and that will hopefully get some concise, like a spot where people can go to be like, okay, if I want to weigh in on Parks and Rec projects, this is when, where and how I can do it.
Yeah.
And and I, yeah, I super appreciate that. So thank you.
Great question. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Any questions from online? Sorry, Olivier and Melissa? Great. Tom?
Thank you.
Oh. No, great, go ahead.
I was just saying, no, thank you. Appreciate it.
Is focused on the news, information from the city in terms of media relations, the website, social media and video. So for news releases for 2024, we had 303, which was a 15% increase over 2023. And it resulted in just over 100,000 views of those news releases. So we got some good traction there. The most popular ones for the year were the fireworks returning for the Fourth of July. Pickleball courts opening at Schneider Park, Lake Night Horse opening for its annual spring opening. And of course, the spring cleanup for April was the number four. And the outlier was number five. This was actually an event that took place in October of 2023. But it, for some reason, well, not for some reason, it's, you know, it's police activities, which is always popular, but that actually carried over into 2024. So that was actually our number five most popular news release of 2024. For the website page views, we had a stellar year. We had just over 3 million page views, which was up 37% over 2023. This is primarily, we think, because of all of the cross pollination we're doing with our social media, where everything's got a link taking you back to the website for additional information. But again, 37% growth is huge. Can we maintain this? I don't know. It's just, it's crazy how fast it's growing. Top seven webpages within the site, of course, jobs, number one. We wish it was news releases, but it's jobs. The homepage, that was their number two. Airport, number three. Libraries, number four. News releases, that's number five. I think I actually only have top six. And then the rec center. This is typical what we see over the years with airport library news releases and the rec center being really, in addition to jobs, where where people are looking for the most information. So no huge surprises there. Social media, cut to the chase, we had a 16% growth in total audience, members, followers essentially at 75,000. That's up over 65,000 in 2023. And those bars, what you're looking at, show where the most of the growth has been occurring. The city main accounts, in particular Instagram, is where most of your growth is taking place. That's a result of the videos that we're kind of flooding the airways with right now. And then the police came in, number two, and you can see Airport, Parks and Rec, Library transit at the bottom. The one notable part about our growth is we actually, for the first time since I've been here, only four years, we saw Twitter going down for the year by only 100. But you know, there's a lot of media focus on Twitter. I don't know if you saw the news today about Facebook and that whole thing on censoring. So it'll be interesting to see what happens in 2025. But bottom line is we're still seeing great growth, I think, for a town of 20,000. Having 75,000 audience is just kind of crazy. Impressions, again, this is really just the the number of times our content is put before users on social media. So take these numbers with a grain of salt, but there's still 10 million impressions, you know, for the year is just astronomical. 36% growth over 2024. You can see where most of the people are weighing in. It's not a big surprise. Facebook in blue is where most of our audience is right now. The airport has actually the most impressions of everybody at just about three and a half, four million impressions. Partially, that could be because of their advertising campaigns, but there's also a very dedicated airport crowd out there. So any airport related news, they love it. Video, again, this is where a lot of our efforts have been. 2024, we had just over 2 million video views across all platforms. It's almost double what it was in 2023. Again, will that continue? We'll see. Because main video views, of course, are being done on Instagram, just over a million. Facebook's number two at 673,000, YouTube, and it just kind of tapers off down there at the very end. So again, video is really what just what we're capitalizing for for last year and will continue to push that forward in 2025. And then I thought I would just end this with the top posts by channel, so you can kind of get an idea of what's going on. Facebook, we it's not too surprising that we had, of course, silly Elmo videos, you know, got 102,000 video views and silly Cybertrucks. But what's important to me is that it's not just being viewed as a platform of just silliness. You know, like we had the FBI say, we need some help. We put out that their post and shared it. And the impressions are a little bit different for Facebook, but you know, we had 225,000 views of this one post. It translates into 80,000 impressions, but I just wanted to let you know it's not just all fun and games. We are, where it gets us a little inconsistent in terms of, you know, our messaging. It's like we have fun cat videos, then we have, oh, by the way, here's somebody out in Toyacu may have shot a kid. Still trying to reconcile that, honestly. But there's your top posts for Facebook. Instagram, pretty much the same thing. Lot of entertainment. People are primarily going there for Cybertruck. There was the mishap with the striping down by 11th Street. And then the Elmo video again. The Cybertruck one, and just on Instagram, was 215,000 views. It's just, that one almost went viral. LinkedIn, we had new mayor, our number one post. And appointment of Kelly as our second most popular post. And then appointment of of Katie for 911 is our third one. LinkedIn also has a very high engagement rate, which I'll actually cover next month if we have time in terms of industry standards. And then finally TikTok, who knows if we'll still have it. There's rumblings now that apparently the president likes it. So maybe it'll stay. If so, we're continuing to build traction on that. It's actually outperforming some other of the older channels in terms of the metrics, which is good. But we'll have to wait and see on that one. And any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Tom? Online? All right. Strategic Workforce Development is a quarterly report in there and Adjournment, right? All right. All of those in favor? All right. See you for the regular meeting at 5:30.